Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of Pownell Planning Commission. We're going to start the call meeting to order and we're going to start with a board member roll call. Jim Winchester.
James Pownell.
John Bache.
Fred Miller.
Stacy Boxer.
David Bell.
Brian Harris.
And next, our next agenda item is to approve the agenda, which is, which consists of approval of minutes for October twenty first. A visit from B C R C. Then we're going to set our next meeting agenda items, go to public comment, and adjourn.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Rule of the minutes for October twenty first would be. Present members for that meeting were myself, Jim Winchester, Stacy Boxer, and David Bell.
Two approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying.
I'm saying.
Be like that. You know what? I think I will. Next time, think about voting for it.
And bring us to our visit with B C R C.
So I had my coworker was supposed to be doing this, but it's here to their house.
Oh, okay.
It's been with you.
Okay.
So can we maybe just give him a couple of minutes?
Sure.
So I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
How many people here have done a municipal consult since before?
I've had one.
A municipal consultation?
Oh, yeah, I think we're, I'm sure we've had.
I've sat to plenty of presentations for B C R C. I did. I almost assumed this was the same thing, just presenting the planning commission.
No, no. So we are required to meet with the towns within our commission area. Frequently, not quite. It's every couple of years and basically we kind of go over your town plan. Scott's going to be much better at this than I am. Basically go over your town plan, maybe offer some suggestions if necessary. We do have, I'll hand this out while we wait for Scott. The last time I did this was in twenty twenty three, Cali came, I work for Cali. Oh, there he is. And this is, this is from that meeting.
Okay.
So just to kind of refresh your memories if you were here or. Let you know what happened in twenty twenty three at one of these. And then we'll let Scott take over.
Yeah.
Hello.
How's it going, Scott?
How are you guys doing? Hi. So. I'm sure as Darrel explained, this is a regular thing to do over a few years. We try to have every municipality in the state in our region. Part of a statewide initiative, every single regional planning commission has these consultations across the state with their individual towns. And, you know, this is more of a just general review. See where you guys are out of the town plan, see where you guys are at as far as items that may or may not need to be updated. And then get an idea as to what other types of things we might be able to help you with as B C R C. Either from a training standpoint or assisting with grants and other things too. Now I know you guys are particularly plugged in compared to, you know, some of the other places we work with because you guys have already. Been involved in applying for municipal planning grants and doing all these things and working with us over the last couple of years. So hopefully this will be a little bit. An easy exercise for us to get through. But if you want to just go through what we talked about last time. In twenty nineteen, when we had you guys. Yeah, twenty nineteen, so the plan review was twenty nineteen, right?
The plan was done in twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty three was when it counts.
Twenty twenty three is when it counts, right? Big difference there. Yeah. Anything before twenty twenty, it sets me off, but that was a really long time ago. But. I didn't have too many, nothing, you know, really stuck up too much here. Seems like similar situations when it comes to. Land use planning, guys seem to be continuing to work on that. Village centers, you know, natural, you know, resort protection seems to be something you guys have continued to talk about since then. Everything is already hitting all the, all the notches here. Weaknesses, natural resources, something about agricultural resources that has not been necessarily taken up since. This competition twenty twenty three, as far as my knowledge goes, maybe that's something we want to talk about. Historic preservation, community facilities and services, so all this is. All this is a part of our conversation we've had recently. Drink some drugs, so. I guess the initial thing. To talk about them is what you have sort of on the agenda. Those town plan adoption, like I said, is that that was in April of twenty nineteen. You know that that's going to be expiring. relatively soon, so that's why you're involved with the N B G application this year. So the other thing is town plan comparison, what you guys put it on. So then they've also developed land, which is your local emergency management plan. That's to be done annually by June first. Bylaws and zoning, so your zoning map was most recently updated in twenty twenty. And you had a bylaws update in August of twenty twenty one. Bylaws meet the National Flood Insurance Program standards, but you don't have river corridor protections. And that, and then the hazard mitigation plan, you don't currently have a hazard mitigation plan. On rare, so that's something that you may want to consider and, and Darrel here, I'm sure can tell. You know, some of the benefits of having that. Otherwise, you guys have a few other things going on, obviously. In addition to the applications, the N B G application I just mentioned. Obviously you've got that scoping study that's happening. colleague Sam will be acting as the agent on that scoping study for the. Recommendations related to the town center study that was done a couple of years ago now. And Sam will also be working with you guys to figure out whatever list of contractors and groups to do that. So I think that that's all organized. I'm not a hundred percent sure whether the contracts have all been signed for that or not, but. That is. Moving forward to my understanding. And. And of course, there's been some. Central news about some, some firehouse redevelopment, some might potentially coming from local Congressperson's office, learning about that. Is, it's just conversation at this point, I'm not, I'm sure. But that's also something I understand, so blame the worst. Yeah. So are there any items that I have left off here that you think would be worth noting in our report? Basically what we're going to be doing, if we're going to be putting together a list of bullet points after this conversation, very similar to what you have in front of you. Happy to share, and we'll be sharing it with you at the end, but effectively it's, it's going to be set up the same exact way where we talk about. You know, how, how we're, this is opportunities, threats that you guys are facing from a planning perspective here. And what your, what B C R C can hopefully do to assist with that. So as far as. Just other items hanging out in the air, is there anything else I should be aware of?
A little clarity on the process, so.
Sure.
Reworking the town, the existing town plan. We've molded over quite a bit and we pretty much. I was, I was saying mine that the thing is a little bit hefty and there's a lot of. Charts. Data that. We, we, we're unsure how that really serves. A purpose.
Yeah.
You know. For somebody looking to move to Pownell, to start up a business, to do these data sets and charts to actually. Help them make a decision or not.
So you're looking for a plan that'll all serve people.
The question is, can we eliminate, because I think that plan went from like that to that. And. It just seems to be really cumbersome, more than it needs to be.
I think the goal is to make it really useful and to make it something approachable by anybody coming in. And yes, we want to refer today to sources elsewhere, wherever they may be, if you need more depth in terms of data. But making, we don't know how far we can hone it down and meet the requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the state does have a specific list of requirements and we have a town plan, you know, approval document that sort of says it means to have all these. So that doesn't mean you necessarily need to have all of that information, same way, especially and not in the same way that it's presented. In the existing town plan, so. You know, some of that is, is to give context to the, to the other things. In the plan that are sort of hopefully more valued of the people coming into the town. That talk a little bit more about sort of the vision of the town where the, you know, planning commission is hoping that it's sort of grows to. And, and you know, where the, where the preferred, you know.
Plan refers to state, statewide goals. Regional goals and then local goals. Do we have to follow that structure?
No, there are, there are different ways of organizing a structure for the town plan. And when that town plan process happens, one of the first conversations you should have with whichever consultants that are working on that. As a municipality of your size, you are not. You know. We are part of a bidding process to work on, on contracts with you at the regional commission. Smaller towns like. Just working on the town plan in Sunderland right now, you know, they have a small population, they get a big and automatic. We get to work with them without R F P process, but there is a process too that you guys will go through once you get approved for the N B G funding. Which would then. You know, be competitive, B C R C would make an offer, hopefully there are other groups, sometimes there are other groups that make offers on these. On these plans, but. You know, in the process, you know, within the first two meetings, one of the first things that they should bring to you is examples of other town plans that exist. Throughout the region and, and also ways that they can be formatted and structured. You know, some can be done in a very bare bones kind of way, if you just want to have a simple, you know, get down to business type of situation. Or other places, well, for example, I was just at the Bennington Town Plan and they wanted, you know, a million photographs, they wanted bright colors, they wanted things that were going to be very.
Expensive.
So.
Time attached.
Yeah. But it depends on how you feel that it could be serving people, like you said, you're, you're worried about your town plan. Not necessarily serving the local population right now, is that right?
Yeah.
Or, or retention business, so you also think a little more access.
Some of it, I can speak myself, I'm more interested in local control. And I don't know if that's a dinosaur now. I rarely maintain much of that as well.
To my eye, the recommendations and stuff were spaced out through the plan and not highlighted. We could do formatting things to make them more visible, but if I'm trying to see what is it the town is suggesting we want to be doing, I have to search. And it'd be great to really make them pop out or have them all in an executive summary or something to make it, this is what we're doing. And here's why, you know, after that, something like that.
So. What B C R C has done recently is create sort of a matrix at the end of our town plans where we have a basic chart that says here are. Here are our goals, you know, and here are some immediate action items, and here's a basic timeline for when that can be done. And there's sort of like, you know, the, the parties involved who would be most important to talk to and are sort of chief or, or have meetings related to these goals. And that's something that's absolutely doable and that's something that might even be doable. With the existing town plan, but I mean, obviously, you want to make sure it's, it's in place for the next town planning.
The, the, the most recent town plan was created, I think the focus at that time was on renewable energy. Was on energy and renewables and, and so I think a lot of discussion and a lot of work went into the, into meeting the requirements for that. So I know that, you know, there could be some statewide agendas that we need to be focused on. Be helpful to be aware of them.
So I'd ask.
Later than later.
I'd ask those about statewide, right?
Probably want to write something about the, the racetrack, but it's kind of in limbo right now. What are we supposed to write?
Right.
Other than the history of it. Well, specifically, the question seems to be out there about what, if anything, is developable there? And I looked at the floodplain maps and I came to one conclusion and somebody else came to a different conclusion. So I need to be educated about what is and is not possible for that land, and I don't have a clear idea of that.
I, I think that property right now is just the category of wishlist because we really don't have any controls.
Not until the seventh of January, when it's auctioned.
Yes, but getting that, that grandstand dealt with and, you know, the eyesore that it is. And maybe creating something that's actually attractive would be so good for the town. Well, I'm not sure what our part is in that, you're right. I mean, the timing is difficult and, and the parameters are unknown and the costs are completely unknown. But it's kind of the big elephant in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, it's a bit of a, it's definitely a.
I'm always going to buy it and we don't know what their plans are. Maybe they'll buy it, I don't know.
Yeah.
We don't know what we don't know. But if somebody wants to buy it and develop it in some fashion, I'll support them any way I can, as long as it's, you know, legal. For almost anything.
Within the context of the town plan.
Yeah.
Do we want to focus on individual properties like that? Probably not.
Smarter, smarter place.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a large property that affects. You know, everything around it, you know, I mean, there's lots of things to consider, access issues to a property like that, a large parcel, things like that. So you, you know, you do want to get a sense as to what uses can, can happen there or not happen there. How to. If the town has any role and help accommodate those uses. If a developer wants to come in and ask something, you know, so, so the town has a reasonable. Ex estimation of what they're going to do there and what, and how to mitigate any potential bad impacts, you know, or. Hopefully they're positive impacts, bad impacts, of course, but those are all sort of part of your role. All right, so that's. So those, those are pretty good, so let's go back to the, the framing idea of. Going into the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats a little bit, so. We talked a little bit about the strengths, you have a lot of, a lot of iron in the fire right now. Are there any changes potentially from the existing list of strengths here on this, here? From the previous. Consultation?
I think, you know, housing is, is a big issue everywhere and trends.
I think the sewage.
What's hiding our way, I guess, is always a question. We currently have. Transitory. Housing, oh, I don't know, it's microt, um. Homeless people, they don't have a racetrack. But so we're experiencing that as other communities are now. So should we plan? Ahead. You know, is there a trend where it's projected to get worse? And communities got to be prepared for it, you know, have, have some kind of a plan in place to, to hopefully help, help with the situation.
That's, yeah, something we can add to your community, to weaknesses and threats section for sure.
Also, we have excess capacity on the sewage in the town, just something on the sewage, yeah, right.
Yeah, same thing, yeah.
Darcy sold it, yes?
Yeah, yes. It was tough getting that out.
Did, did she highlight which areas are most. Most able to manage the capacity?
There, there's a map that indicated there would, there would be less constraints.
We were only at twenty five percent of capacity?
No, 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 there was twenty percent additional capacity. We're not at twenty five percent of.
What are we?
I think we're at about seventy five, eighty percent and there's no twenty percent capacity. That's how I read it, if I remember right. This kind of follows from things that are already here under strengths, but probably worth calling out, the development of the village district. I think that's got a huge amount of potential, so following up on that. And, and actually that's sort of a question I have because I know the town plan's really been taking the lead on. The scoping study, which is great, and obviously we want to be in on that, which is why I'm coming to those meetings now. But somehow coordinating how this happens and so we make sure that this is incorporated in our work, that seems critical.
So. Better. Better communication between the planning commission and other town committees.
Well. I mean, I'm taking it upon myself, I mean, Tom is here for exactly that reason, I'm going to his meeting for that reason. So I think we're doing that to a degree, but just sort of. Recognizing that the village district development is a high priority, the scoping study is going on, we're going to learn a lot of stuff from that. And that somehow should be incorporated in whatever we're writing up.
What, what is the scoping study? Bring me up to date on that.
What are the costs and benefits of all the different ideas kind of thing?
It's an extension of the ability.
They're going to look at what the cost of putting in the crosswalks and sidewalks and other things that are recommended. And that study from two years ago. They're going to put some harder numbers on that and, and doing some additional feasibility math beyond with the initial. Overview that was going to be two plus. There's going to be an engineering firm that. Uses their methodology. Great. So agricultural resources, any, any thoughts about that, you guys? Not a ton of development, yeah, agricultural land, but there has been subdivisions, right? And. Yeah, have there, has there been any? Consideration about, about that at all or to think about there?
And you're two, are you talking about encouraging agricultural uses or?
Preserving agricultural lands, yeah.
So. So.
Yeah.
Might just go on and find me.
So, yeah, could put a constraint on development. For certain areas.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that's something you need to do, that has been, any conversations you've had about that? Because that's something that. In twenty twenty three, the commission said that they were interested in doing, according to this documentation.
I know anything, most farmland right now is put into. State usage stuff, so that, that blocks a lot of the stuff from housing building anyways, so. I don't think there's going to be a lot built on that.
Actu fifty would control a lot of that.
Yeah, but they're, they're just like, they're land use stuff, all the land use, if they're like, go Meyer Farm, when they put that in, there's a bunch of land that's land use. So once it's put into that, there's like, you can't build on it, since farming, it's farming use only. So there's, there is a bunch of land, I'm not sure what, all the farms have it right now, but there is a lot of, a lot of farming land has it now. So there's areas like that that won't, won't be able to be.
For the town plan, would we like. The inventory of the places that are already. In land trust?
Put that in?
That'd be great, yeah. Yeah, that's a credit, yeah.
Things mentioned in here, but we spent a fair amount of time on the last couple of meetings is, is water. Particularly with the changing acceptable level of the B P O H, which we believe is going to affect. A big section of the town, so our concern, and particularly during this recent drought, there were some real problems. And so a little more emphasis on developing a plan around that would probably be with incorporating.
Or basically putting a water system in.
Well, I don't know if that's the answer, but that's one of the possible answers, you know.
This big trailer park ran out of water, but five weeks. Oh, forty trips.
Five weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were totally, they were breaking water.
They were trucking water out of the track.
Which one as well?
Over here.
Cozy Meadow, cozy Meadow.
On water three times a day. Seven weeks.
Wow. I can do it once.
So that may be a problem, or that may be something that could be addressed at the same time as the. Firehouse redevelopment, you know, since they're going to be putting in a big system for that anyway.
Yeah, but the, the system is only just, that's just non-drinkable water.
That's true. Yeah, and at least I heard that the B P O H level, acceptable level was being dropped. And, and it, the supposition was, and I don't have any data, I don't have any knowledge, was that there were a lot of. Houses in the community that were below the current threshold and were going to be above the future threshold. That's going to be a big deal.
Those are the ones.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Just assign. Your. Monitors up in front of the mics, blocking.
Yeah, I don't know if it makes a difference, but yeah, thanks.
You guys had a bylaw update as far as your, your, everything goes. Not, not that long ago, you were also talking about trying out with some of the bylaws. You know, I think there was a debate whether you wanted to go with the town plan first or the bylaws first, if I remember correctly. You guys speak anything on, on the bylaws at all right now, is there anything you think? In particular needs to be.
One, one point of interest, but. In particular, I think everybody. Kind of agreed. Our Malik Elementary School, the property. We've discussed changing zoning on that to school campus. Like creating a special zone.
Okay.
To preserve that as, as much as we can reasonably possibly do that.
Okay.
And if we don't have to create, complete the town plan before we do that, if we do that sooner.
Okay, can you do that before?
Can we, yeah. I don't know, and we're going to, we're going to have a discussion with a zoning administrator in a couple of weeks. And, you know, if there's any, any problems that he's running into with zoning that. But right now, it seems like things are serving the town pretty well.
I think we, we sort of tabled the bylaw discussion, but after we recognized that almost all the new requirements about, you know, infill and development. Required water and sewer, and there were very few areas in town that had that, so it really wasn't going to affect us very much. So we said, okay, we'll just deal with it later.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah, and I can, I can look up if there's anything we can share with you as far as any kind of, you know, educational. Preservation, zoning, land use. Preservation zoning land use uh. Rules you can look the place for that.
So Scott, I'm gonna interject here, just we're talking about uh the bylaws, so I was gonna put up the select board meeting, I did, I'm gonna repeat what I said there, so.
That's fine.
Uh with the, with, there's a, the E R A F rate, the Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund. Is anyone familiar with? Okay, I'm seeing, yes, okay. So um I should have done my whole presentation.
Do you still have it on there?
Yeah, too. So the E R A F rate uh is a base rate that the state comes in and will reimburse to the town. Um on top of what FEMA comes in after disaster repossesses. Um so FEMA comes in and after disaster, let's say you have one of your town bridges knocked out and it's a million dollars. FEMA will come in and they will reimburse the town seventy five percent of that. Right, so that would leave normally the town paying for twenty five percent of that bridge. The state back in two thousand fourteen enacted the the E R A F funding. And they come in and as a base, they will reimburse the town seven point five. At a minimum. If you take specific steps, you can increase the rate that the town will get reimbursed. Um right now, panel is at seven point, is at the seven point five percent, um because they haven't. Completed all of the additional steps that need to be.
Steps.
So the steps are the uh, you have to. Check.
What? National Flood Insurance Program, so your bylaws do meet N F I P standards at this point.
So excellent. Um you have adopted road standards, road and bridge standards, those are done. And you annually have adopted your local emergency management plan. Uh so Craig submits that annually. The other one is the local hazard mitigation plan, uh which I believe Powell hasn't had since like. Two thousand ten or two thousand eleven, it's it's been a while. Um and that's who I was at the select board meeting actually talking about was that hazard mitigation plan. If you complete those four steps, that would um turn, that would increase the state reimbursement to twelve point five percent. So then you're left, the town is left holding the bag for only twelve point five percent of that bridge. If you do all four of those and you adopt river corridor. That would increase the state's reimbursement rate to seventeen point five percent.
This river corridor?
So there are river corridor bylaws that you would put in to protect uh areas, the the river corridor around area. Uh. And so that, yes, that would increase you to the max percentage of the seven uh the seventeen point five percent from the state, leaving. The town only responsible for seven point five percent of that bridge.
So say, say we worked on the river corridor and there's currently there's housing within where where the corridor would be.
So a lot of those, those are like brand pottery. But if there's substantial damage or anything to those, the way that you would rebuild back in that area would probably be a, you know, a little different. And, you know, we would give you the state. What the state recommends as a standard and, you know, we would.
Our our does, are designating that particular area where that home is sitting. As a river corridor, would that be affecting? Uh the possibility that the owner would have a problem with house with home insurance, owners insurance.
So no, the river corridor doesn't impact the insurance, that would, what more impacts the river, the insurance is the substantial flood risk there.
Yeah.
So in which there probably are.
Sure.
But it, but it may impact that property owner's ability to expand their home. Or uh in the case of any flood damage for them to build it back the exact same way it was.
Yes, so it would impact. Future development or substantial improvements. In that way, and we can, I can send the planning commission what the state demands.
That'd be great.
Yep, absolutely, I'll send you the model language, um and we can kind of talk through that. That process um to see if it's something that you want to do. We have some towns that say absolutely don't want those, we're fine. With only the twelve point five percent from this.
And what would the reasons be to not do it?
They, they're um, some towns are just really worried about. Not allowing new development within the river. Some towns feel that, you know, there is developable land there, it's worth the risk.
Ah, okay.
So it is something that we can discuss further, yeah, I think it's worth a conversation, especially for um Powell.
Yeah.
So.
I think you got any quick examples of what? Um. What could, what could be done as far as building walls, like. You know, flood walls and stuff like that along along our river, is that something that would be?
So that we would pull in the river management crew um to talk about, I know that they try to keep things as natural as possible. You know, levees are a big deal. To do something like that, and they're they're not huge fans of that, you know, they want to manage it as naturally as possible. But I don't know, grow on that, so we would bring in our rivers management crew, Josh Garble, you know, we would be having conversations with them. That's all of that.
Ideally, the lower costs, you know, if there's a way to do. A whole bunch of wetlands to absorb that water instead of, you know, a a wall to block it moving further, further down, that's another. I feel like the the sponge idea is a lot more popular now than the sort of. Uh hard infrastructure uh concepts.
And the river corridors are put into place more to have no adverse impact development. Not to stop development entirely, but just so that what is developing doesn't have an adverse impact on that river, upstream, downstream. So, uh you know, it's not saying you can't build anything anywhere, it's just we want to make sure that as we're developing, we're doing it without those negative impacts.
Okay, um. So uh how about uh are there any non-regulatory priorities you guys have, so we're not talking about your permitting process or your bylaws and stuff anymore? Um uh last time you guys talked about your Parks and Recreation Committee and Development, I, you know. Now, of course, I was far in sewer, which is related, uh obviously you've already talked about water and sewer again. Uh are there uh any other? Thoughts about those topics uh that 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 we might want to share, just generally say that they they continue to be uh ongoing? Point of interest in a term?
Two and a five hundred six. No, I'm thinking of the buyer district up here.
Oh, right.
One in North Farm.
Uh. I mean, that's, that that may also be related to the water things you're talking about too, so. Um, you know, one of the things, you know, not only are there fire districts, of course you have your. Fire district that has its own water, uh it's on water district as well uh in in the southern part of the town. Um but so, you know, I guess maybe the conversation might be more about. Getting a better understanding of jurisdictions uh and is if, and to see if there's any potential. For sharing services um when it comes to either. Water and fire, is that, is that a reasonable thing?
Yeah. Yeah. Seems like a core issue in this town is trying to not raise taxes or even ideally lower them. And uh so figuring out. You know, what are our opportunities for development to share the burden of taxes? Better and are they cost effective to do and and, you know? Because there are all sorts of ideas people might have, but without really any knowledge about the impacts, it's hard to evaluate and. Um we we do want to see the town develop, but. We have so little money to throw at that.
Right.
Trying to figure that out is the challenge.
I guess develop. Understand the tax implications of the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Um that actually works well with sort of a type of thing B C R C might be able to do some more education on for the folks in planning missions, so that's good. Um, great. Uh R P C board representation. Who's our, who's our board rep?
R P C is?
Uh I I I'm the B C R C board. Um it's actually um. Um Walt.
Walt Planer.
Walt Planer is uh is our representative from Powell. Um so uh. Just so you know, uh if you have, that's also. Unappointed position at the um. You know, uh at at the select boards uh choice. Um but uh if there's any. Desire for someone else, Walt has been there for a long time, you know, or everyone's happy with Walt continuing to 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 represent, that's also fine. But just uh.
What what's, what's the requirements of that role? What what are the, what's, what is?
Uh so we have. One, we have six meetings a year. Um so once every two months, there's a, there's a. Somewhere within the county, uh we will have a a meeting. Uh generally, uh it's, there's an educational component, and then there's some kind of a um. You know, a a an oversight element. And uh what what the board member does is they they look at our budget at Benning County Regional Commission and they. Vote on that, they help, um. You have management priorities, they, uh and then whenever there is a town plan or a. Kind of a document that needs to be approved by the regional body. Uh they will vote uh to to approve or 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 not approve those plans, so. Um when this town Sunderland plan that, you know, is 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 done. Uh and adopted by the select board, we're hoping it, August, you know, Walt will be part of it on the regional commission who. Votes, you know, uh to to say whether or not it's it's compliant with the regional plans. Um so items like that happen, uh and uh. Yeah, that that's effectively.
Yeah.
Uh how that, how that operates and. Yeah, like any, anyone, uh any member of a. You know. A board, so similar to a water board or whatnot, you know, uh it's not that you're looking at the budget, you're looking at the operations, you know, you're looking at the way things go. And so uh. B C R C as a, you know. Public private organization, we're we're legally a not-for-profit organization, but we are required to exist by state law. Um, you know, and and all of our board members are. You know, are 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 representatives from each each of the towns that that are part of our commission.
We're lucky enough to have Mr. Sullivan, who's. Who's another step, so pretty good, pretty good guy.
Great, um. Great, if there's any other uh folks.
Do you have any training needs?
Right, yeah, yeah, how do you guys, uh we we've talked a little bit about uh training needs, it's something like this uh. Uh helping them understand tax implications of development, but if you've thought of any other training needs that might be good. Um, we do have a. Um. Annual training for members of planning commissions and for members of uh select boards that we do in the spring every year, so um. That's a big overview, here's what. Commissions do, here's how. Um the town plan works, et cetera, um but but a nice general refresher course. Uh and that always has a little bit of information about whatever the most recent. You know, changes to state law have been as well, um.
And those are, those are through um. In 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 person meetings?
Those are in person, that's an in-person meeting that we have every year, um hosted at B C R C, last year we had at the Benning Firehouse. Uh we tend to flip-flop whether it's in Northshire or the Southshire every year, so. If you're proud, imagine.
They occur during the work day though.
Or or they do, yeah, so you're, yeah, that, right, so uh.
Volunteer positions, so like. Have appointment.
Right, uh great, that's actually a really good feedback.
Yeah. An asynchronous training would be. Something online where you can access it at midnight if you want.
Or you. And what, you know, we do record them, uh and we have the capacity to uh. Share them with you guys and we'll make sure that that's at at least that development to you, uh if we can uh find a way to. Maybe have a second meeting for uh other talks. Great. Uh. Anything else, uh? Great. Okay, well, if you have any other questions, um.
I I was, I'm mostly, mostly curious about the 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 question about zoning change. Creating a special zone.
Okay.
I know that was done for Bennington. They created a couple of special zones, and that's what kind of triggered the thought in my head, but. Uh yeah, why don't we actually create a special zone for that school project? Those, you know, to make a long story short, Act forty six happened. And then two or three other acts followed. Because they're trying to still get it right. So we're getting lost in the weeds, I have to make sure that that property is. Front and center of our minds.
The implications of that. Would be, you know, that if it stopped being a public school, then the property would.
Yeah.
Potentially be a. A private school or something like that.
Something, yeah.
Or 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 reserved, reserved for a similar use.
For for seventy years, it's been, it's been a. Um education.
Right.
Facility for educating our our children.
Right, just so it can't be like. Sold off and developed as a. Right, anything.
Something other than a school. You have.
Is you all worried about the changes?
I'm I've been worried since since Act forty six happened.
And then when you were merged with the S C S, you were grass, okay.
Yeah, and with the larger mergers going on with this, the state mandating that the number of districts gets consolidated.
Yeah.
The fear is that's going to happen more and more. Cost cutting comes onto the table and then outline districts start looking really, really good at cutting. And busing kids becomes a lot cheaper than. Keeping a whole school.
Originally Act forty six, there was a contingency if. Schools to be closed, that it would be given back to the town, the problem.
Yeah, the town buys it for a dollar, Sunderland is closing, so we're working with that.
Being lost in the weeds, and all of a sudden somebody might get the idea sent, sell it to some big developer with big feet pockets and then it's gone.
Yeah, and so the planning commission would like to be able to prevent a future select board from being able to make them into condos or something.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, right. Great.
Okay. Good things to, instead of, as we, you know, we see towns here, losing their goals.
No, uh uh ideally, uh early education, K to twelve facility, but you know, even a um. A place for for trade, trade education, higher education. And you know, anything that has to do with education, first, first priority would be case law.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get back to it.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Give you time.
Thank you too for coming down.
We'll send you a follow-up with uh. Uh follow the information we collected today, if you have any notes to add, uh we'll be sure to do that for we.
Right, we're bear bones of writing the town plan. Um. At what point do we engage with you? Would we wait for the municipal planning grant to?
So there, we're hoping they're gonna release uh the information about who. Has won the municipal planning grants in in January, I believe is where we're 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 hoping, uh that's the. I don't know, used to be um on this timetable, um. Once that happens, uh then then the town is required to. Um. You know, sign some paperwork with the state and approve everything. Um but then uh you you're gonna require to do a a request for proposals uh on on the plan. And then um. B C R C will put together a. A budget, a scope of work, uh and then any other consultants who also apply. Uh will also put together a budget, scope of work, and then it's going to be up to the planning commission to make the decision as to who they'd like to work with.
Yeah.
And you can, you can take a little bit of time to figure that out. But ideally, you get that done quickly, so that way there's time to actually do the work. Uh the town matches, you have two years to spend the money, once the money has been given to you, I think it's the planning grant, so. Um, you know, what with the process, especially the adoption process, taking. You know, a minimum of ninety days, uh once you guys say yes, uh but this is the plan we would like to give to the select board. It's a minimum of ninety days before it goes into effect after that. So you want to sort of think about that, uh think about your current plan expiration date, you know, and think about the ninety day approval process. Uh, maybe more if your town select board wants to push a little longer and do it at the same time as, uh, you know, town meeting day or something like that too, which is also an option. If they don't want to build an individual themselves, you know.
But is there any, any suggestions for, you know, how, how we should develop our, what, what's the best way for us to hand stuff off to you? What's the best form or what are the things we should do and what are the things that we can not do or, you know? I mean, we've been playing with writing certain sections, but we don't know if we're getting too far into the weave, you know?
Uh, so the way the process typically goes is, um, a, there's a, you know, the consultant will come in and they'll, uh, review with you. They'll get ideas to what type of plan you want to have. You want to have something very graphical, you want to have something bare bones, if you want to have something digital, if you want to have something extremely user-friendly, all those things. Um, and then there'll be, uh, a general findings period, uh, where the consultant will be doing some, you know, uh, some background research, uh, at the same time as, as there's a community engagement element. So every town plan has to have, uh, public meetings and get feedback from the public about, about that. Uh, and then there will be a presentation of the public feedback, sort of a, a distillation of all that information, uh, to the planning commission. Uh, once the planning commission accepts that, then based on the public feedback and the direction the planning commission, consultant tends to start writing the plan and then, uh, sending you chapter by chapter to then, uh, whittle, you know, fiddle with, say, oh, what if we changed this to this? What if this was that? And that's the period where the planning commission is most directly involved, is sort of in those last four months of the process. Um, and often planning commissions find themselves holding, you know, multiple meetings a month during that time period just so they can, um, spend one meeting kind of dealing with the plan and then do the other meeting dealing with, you know, any other kinds of, uh, issues that are before them.
If, if our current plan expires, maybe it already has, I don't know, um, is, is there, is there a year, right? Oh, yes, is there a risk involved with it being expired? Is there an extension that we could?
So if your town plan expires, uh, all it means is that you are unable to change any of your bylaws until you've adopted a new town.
Okay, right.
That's effectively what that means. Um, you can continue to issue permits, uh, and all the things, uh, as long as they're compliant with the existing bylaws and the existing town plan. Uh, but if the town ever wants to grow or change or do anything that's slightly different, they need to make sure that town plan, okay.
To talk about the public comment, but then the writing happens afterwards. So what is the public commenting on?
Uh, well, this public comment is actually another, it's community engagement. So there will be, uh, the consultant will work with you to develop, you know, surveys, um, you know, they just, uh, we're working, our colleagues are working with, uh, Old Bennington right now to do their village plan. Uh, they've done a couple of historical walking tours, um, similar to what we did here in Donald, when we did our village, uh, scrubbing plan. Um, so things to get feedback from the public about the way and the shape they'd like to see things move forward. Um, oftentimes, you know, include going to schools or senior centers and things like that too, you know? Just do some direct committee outreach and get, uh, some feedback from the public about, uh, these bigger ideas, you know, so.
It strikes me then that trying to write sections right now is cart before the horse.
Well, so it's a way, it's a way of like having an idea where we want to go.
Yeah.
And, you know, when we get approved for the municipal planning grant and we're looking to,
Certainly hand off what we've done, but, you know, it may be that it has to go this way.
We can know ahead of time, definitely, um, make, make that work a little bit easier, I think.
I'm sure it'll be helpful to consult for you to have some of that for, go in advance, yeah, if that's what the entire commission agrees on. And who knows, a year from now, it's still around the exact same, the exact same wording.
Right.
But, um, yeah, I mean, at this point, it's.
I'm, I'm at, I'm at a point where we're taking the existing one and just deleting all this material that we don't, submit that.
Right, there are charts that are outdated.
Oh, well.
And theory, they would be updated, that stuff.
Right.
That stuff has to be, so you don't have to age all the day.
Yes.
Get into the weeds, but yeah. You know, I did some of the.
Fair enough.
That stuff has to be used.
Really interesting.
Yeah, well, I mean, so, so some things, some things that you think are, maybe you're, you know, so you had mentioned the energy section earlier. That, that is one of the sections that's a little more exhaustive as far as state law saying it has to have a lot of, you know, A, B, C, D requirements.
I think, I think we're good with that.
Yeah, I'm sure you, I'm sure you meet that. So what I'm saying is like, those are the kind of things where you just have to make sure when you're drafting the next plan, that you're, that you're meeting, meeting all the requirements in law and so that they'll act efficiently as a plan legally and you guys are covered as far as everything in there, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Some things like you better refer to in a narrative form as opposed to the charts and that, that's a stylistic choice that, that.
Yeah.
And that, that could be exactly what it, what it is we're reacting to. It was like, these charts is like, doesn't answer any of my questions at all, but a narrative would answer everything.
Well.
So.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Brings us to our next meeting of the islands. Um, our next meeting, that's when we're meeting with Mike, right? Uh, and that's a discussion with Mike about i- i- in his role as, um, zoning administrator, what, how, how the town plan is serving him, how the bylaws are serving, or not serving him, serving the community. There's feedback on, oh, how long that's going to take. It could take a while. Hopefully, it could take a while. Have a good conversation, do some good ideas, get an, get an idea of what we may need to work on.
And then after that, you're also going to have the executive session.
Um.
For the review.
Yeah. That would be another as well.
Okay, so that's the purpose is going to be, he's going to submit his self-evaluation and we're going to meet with him and go over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, we, so the purpose is the select board would like the planning commission because we, we basically picked the zoning administrator. That they would like us to start doing the annual review of zoning administrator and administering that, right? So, so that's what they would like us to start doing. So yes, he's going to do a self-eval, but we should also have something in mind. Like any comments, questions, concerns, anything we'd like him to pay attention to, any changes that we'd like to be made. Basically, it's an employee evaluation.
Yeah, we should have, um, an idea of what the statute requires of a zoning administrator. We should show that beforehand before we have the, so it would be a homework, it's a homework thing and we.
We should have. Special. You know, I don't know. Well, um, typically with evaluations, when, when I've been involved in the past, I mean, it's good to have some, somebody with knowledge of H R requirements to help guide us because I don't know much about that. I don't know if there's anybody in town that has that, but.
When I, when I was thinking H R, I was just thinking the statute for.
Well, that's great and I don't know anything about statutes either, so I'm not in a really good position here.
When is this meeting? December two?
Um, I will also bring that little, uh, proposal for the up the greenup day, uh, which I was working on, which is hopefully just something I'll distribute ahead of time and get everybody's blessing on, although if there are any questions or alterations people want, so hopefully that's just a five-minute thing.
Greenup discussion, what is it?
It's, it's to, uh, basically we want to expand on the idea of what we did at the property, the tag sale property and do a few more. And find a way to do it where the. No, and this would not be either. But we want to have the select board's approval and, uh, in discussing it with a small group, we said it probably would get an easier time getting approval if the conservation commission and the planning commission, uh, wanted to support it. Um, but it's being designed so there's no financial or liability impact for the town. So we'll, you know, I'll, I'll give you the whole.
Yeah, discuss it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's on our agenda, meeting with Mike.
You want to, you want to, are you going to do his, that with him before or after?
Do the discussion first and then the meeting. And then go on to it?
I feel like hearing what he has to say first will be useful to me.
Yeah.
I have so little ground here.
But rather, um.
Cause he does any presentations to the select board.
Right.
As far as like informational updates.
So, so what I'm going to get, getting at is to do your discussion first.
Oh, I don't care.
Have time to read between our.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's let Dave go first and we can have our open meeting part of it with, with Mike and then move into the executive afterward.
Makes sense.
Okay. So that way Mike's not just sitting here for like the middle of it, like twiddling his thumbs.
Sure, he's up early.
Yeah.
Working.
He would probably actually prefer to be out of here sooner rather than later. So that's why I was asking if you wanted to do like his portion of it first. But we can't really like do open executive. Well, and, well, I guess we could have led the executive in the middle of that. Well, and I'm quite honestly, I think that the proposal hopefully is not going to raise too many eyebrows and, and we can be done with it in a couple of minutes, so. Ah, okay, well, if it's going to be something short, then I'm okay with doing that first.
Do that first.
Yeah.
Did we get a copy of the, uh, his requirements before that?
Yeah, um, the stat, I guess.
Something we can get that out.
The job description?
Yeah. Job description and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this, but this isn't, this isn't going to be treated as, as a job interview. It's just more of a.
I don't know, just ask.
Evaluation.
Yeah, like in my mind, it's just asking for an update, like, so how do you think you've done this year? What have you been, your challenges? Are there, do you have any concerns, anything that needs to be addressed that you need help with, like that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
In, in my mind, that's how I'm going to address it.
Well, it is, but knowing, but knowing the statute, the requirements of the job, that'll help us at a later date when we
Yeah.
have to begin for reappointment.
Have there been past evaluations that might? Usually, it's been, in the past, it's been the select board that does it, but. Right, but I'm just wondering if there's any written, like, if, if in the past they said, we want you to do this, then I'd like to know that so I can find out, has he done it? You know, that kind of.
I don't think they have, I don't.
No, not as much. It's been really more informal. I mean, we're a small town. It's, it's, I don't want to say it's a volunteer position, but it essentially, it's a volunteer position.
There's some evaluation, is that on a form or is that just a narrative that he?
Uh, I don't know if he has a form or not, but I'm assuming he's going to follow at least some kind of structure. I mean, he's a supervisor in his own right for the bus depot, so he's given plenty.
Yeah.
So I'm going to assume if he's making his own, he's going to follow some, a similar format to that.
Hmm. Well, that's what I was wondering, there's all about doing it same night that we're having a conversation with him is if we needed more time to prepare for the evaluation, develop questions for the evaluation ourselves.
Well, the idea going forward is that like we will be hopefully better prepared for next year because employee evaluations are usually done by October for the town. So we're a little late on getting his done, but.
Do with the idea based on what we do at work. You know, as a, we do a self-evaluation at work, but certainly.
Well, so my, my thought is like if, if we as the planning commissioner are going to start doing his reviews, then we should be getting looped in as far as at least being provided his email communication as far as updates to the town. Like how many zoning permits have you approved? How many site visits have you done? How many complaints have you, have you had? How many times you've had to get the state involved for, you know, different aspects of it, like that kind of communication.
Yeah.
So that's a lot we'd need to gather. I don't expect all that to be gathered for this year, but I'm saying going forward after this. I mean, kind of this year, it's like we're going to just kind of be stumbling into it. I don't want to say blind, but I will say blind.
I think a big issue too is how does, uh, town, current town plan involve his job? Because that's, if we're going to be setting all this stuff, we want to know how it's affecting him or has it affected.
That's the first part of the conversation, right? That's the first, you know, yeah. But in terms of evaluating how he's done, since I've had zero interaction with him, I'm completely out of my, you know, it doesn't make any sense for me.
I'm saying we, we, we understand the role and we get a good, good self-evaluation from them compared to the, the role, requirements of the role and.
How, how many complaints has there been against him?
Well, that's, that's just it, like those are, those are the types of things that if the planning commission is going to be evaluating him against, those are the things that we need to be getting. At the very least, chair needs to be getting looped in on so that we're prepared for that. Some kind of summary that somebody could provide. I mean, I'm not crazy about doing an eval on an employee with no notice. I kind of feel like it's not fair to us. It's not fair to the employee. But, you know, we have to make the best of it. I don't anticipate this is going to be anything more than information gathering on our part, getting our feet wet, figuring out a process for going forward. Just hope you can be there at that meeting. Uh, maybe, huh, we'll see.
Mike's, Mike's well satisfied.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, very happy. You know, I just, I don't want to go in there and pretend I know something that I don't.
Yeah, but it's.
Hey, come on. Listen, from what I've seen, it's, he's, he's more involved and he's doing a lot more site visits than what would have been done in the past.
Great.
So.
Yeah, great.
Hey. I, I wasn't, I was involved, not me personally, but I was on a site when he got a call about the site and he was right on it and got a dick care of though.
I mean, if you watch the meetings, he, he gives quite a few updates, at least what he can legally. There's a lot of stuff he's not allowed to discuss in open, in open meeting. But we're all situations are resolved.
Yeah, agenda a little bit.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, no, it's still, it falls under meeting agenda items. It's a broader discussion. Okay, that's a meeting. We're not going to have a discussion as a group without a violation of open meeting law beforehand.
Could we want to continue editing parts of this? Well, I was kind of holding off until we, at least we can meet with Mike and see, see where, you know, what his, his suggestions would be. Um, and then we're, you know, we're, we're aiming towards the municipal planning grant, went for the bare bones of the word. Um, you know, we have ideas of what we want to do. So editing, you know, my, my plan would be to take, take their just plan, um, and chop all, all, all sort of.
They're the shredder.
We have, chop all stuff that identify as relevant.
Yeah.
And.
Well, to Scott's point, there's, there are sections in there that you were state mandated, you have to address one way or another. So I think that's going to kind of really give us a good.
Maringage.
Some guidelines.
Take, you take the, the chop out version of my idea home and they're going to add, add that new material back in. But it'll be more new material instead of.
It'll be updated, yeah.
We update. Twenty thousand times though.
Right. So where we're taking out a chart, because it's old, they might update.
New chart.
Yeah. Mostly so.
I, I, I think we want to stay, we want to, we want to continue to be active.
I Benny takes.
Just want, we want to continue to be active on. You know, we're not, we're not writing, we're not going to write a masterpiece and present it to them. Get our ideas.
You get, you know.
Owned in.
Bare bones, keep it simple. What's missing here and what, what we disagree with now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Pretty simple.
Yes. Very colorful.
Yeah, so, um, I think that's going to bring us to public comment. Any public comment?
Tom, Tom, I'm here mostly just as a incentive for the conservation commission, keep track of you guys doing it. If, if I can ever help you, you know, with what we're doing. Works both ways, but sitting here, of course, I had a couple of thoughts, um, one on, on the racetrack, I get, you can't start looking at individual properties, but I, and I'm spitballing here. I wonder if, if we wrote something into the town plan that, you know, we're looking for water, drinking water capacity. Um, and whatever is redevelopment, we're looking for opportunities. Same thing with the sponge idea, you know, sixty percent of that property is paved. You know, it goes right up to probably a hundred feet of the river pavement, the apartment lot. We're not targeting a property, but we're saying, you know, when something comes through the development board, comes through the town, we're looking for opportunities for, you know, reducing impervious surface. We're looking for capacity of drinking water to. Purbius service, we're looking for capacity, drinking water, to expand businesses, opportunities, housing opportunities. Obviously, it's not telling anybody what to do, but it's at least giving a vision, you know, for what we're looking for. Um, that's one thing. And then I think, probably just last week, maybe you brought, um, can we do anything about the vacant, um, properties?
Property tools and stuff.
And it's a similar situation, you can't tell a specific homeowner or business owner, whatever, if they're paying their taxes. But I wonder if in the town plan, you know. We said, uh, you guys said, you know, as a town, we're looking to, um. Use buildings where possible for new house, or if they're really derelict.
Yep.
Uh, in an area that they're trying to make improvement, um. Again, it may not have any real force of law or anything, but at least gives a vision for, for what we're doing.
Well, if it sounds safe, you know, we may have. Things that we can do.
Yeah, yeah, um, seems like. It's worth an issue, there's, I think, a lot of people in town wonder like, you know. Can we do anything about X, Y, or Z property?
Yeah, if they're abandoned, you know, if somebody owns it. I always look at the place going, Nexus Steiner Film.
Yeah.
And that bothers me with, in Williamson, there's a lot of laws. I know the guy comes in all the time, he's idle in the goddamn place, I'll do whatever. And it's been that way for forty, fifty years. Nasty place.
You talking about the place that has a per se estate on it now, or the?
No, no, Nexus Steiner Film is placed on the right.
I mean, under the railroad contract, this place now.
It's nasty.
I, I think what I was kind of getting at was like an incentive to make sure, you know, there's a, because there's always, you always hear about housing shortages and stuff, and you got houses that are just clean now.
Yeah.
There could be housing somewhere.
Right.
Is there an incentive, can we, you know, an incentive to, you know, either rent it out or sell it? Or create it, I don't, I don't even want to really talk about creating a disincentive for just letting it go, go and see, but.
Yeah.
Are, are we within our rights, without violating somebody else's rights to?
It's a great question.
You know, to raise it and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, again, an incentive is not a rule, you're not.
Right.
And pick me in it.
Yeah.
Well, you could have something, you could do something through zoning bylaws. And craft something like that, I mean, Bennington has something similar for the houses that have fallen into disrepair where eventually. State and where the town goes to court, ends up seizing a property and then demolishing it. I can't say I'm a big fan of that, but I mean, there is precedent for it and it is doable.
How about Pat Gray? Come on, you can do it.
Yeah.
Pat Gray.
You're not supposed to target individual property owners.
I know that.
And I've cautioned against that time and time again. Sure. We're being recorded.
Throw something in with, with an incentive to, to, you know, make it desirable to, to maintain that property.
Yeah. And that's what it comes down to is, is. Making those zoning laws or, or bylaws for the zoning.
Yeah.
And stick to it.
Yeah.
You know, if you have a, a property owner that's got a. A one property, but you're next door neighbor. Next adjacent to you, has got nothing but a scrap metal, uh, you know, mess going on.
Yeah.
And it needs to be cleaned up, we have in place. Stuff from the town, in the town ordinance.
Yeah, there is an ordinance, there isn't, but there's no enforcement.
Have to enforce.
But, so I mean, we could, we could put something in the town plan to give direction to say that we as a town. Are going to be putting an eye toward. More zoning enforcement and cleaning up of our town, then that gives direction for the select board and the zoning board. To start crafting zoning bylaw changes to better address that. That's what Scott was talking about is.
I'm correct, you're currently, you summon four of them.
Yeah, but the problem was, in, in my view, the problem with doing that is creating more laws with no enforcement is pointless.
No enforcement is what's lacking in, but, but. What are you going to do if somebody? Why, why you want, right, he said, if you have the right to destroy somebody's property, that's wrong.
Right.
I mean, you know, one place is nasty, one place is nice.
Yeah.
It models a little bit with it.
Mm-hmm.
You know what?
I'm sure every one of us could list a half dozen places that are, that we would be ashamed to say that we live near.
Why is it not possible to enforce it, you know, give them a fine?
Because civil liberty and personal freedoms.
Mike's, Mike's the guy to do it, okay?
All we can do is know about it.
Yeah, sure.
Do we turn it into more of a discussion?
Yeah, no, it's.
So fair. As long as you're not.
No.
All right, yeah, that's all discussions we can have with Mike, so put that on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Number one.
Okay. Okay, other comments?
Uh, we do have what I wanted.
Okay, yeah. Hi, Jim.
Hey, guys, how you doing? Hey, excellent meeting, um. I wasn't going to really get into anything tonight because I just figured I better sit back. Um, but. Jim Winchester just brought up. We need better enforcement and I have question about certain properties. And I've been told because I'm not a immediate. Neighbor that nothing can be done. And I, I, I just think I'm a little confused because people are afraid to speak up. Because they're the next door neighbors or anything like that and repercussions, it's been a history of Paddle. For many, many, many years that people don't want to speak up because there is just repercussions. So we need to change our attitude in Paddle and you can do it in your. Evaluation, I really don't want to see it.
True.
In executive session, no names need to be brought up. Keep everything civil. But I think we don't need to have an executive session for our zoning administrator who is appointed. And really not, I would say, an employee, but appointed. And I just want to make sure this town has complete transparency. We've gone far enough now. To just say, we got to find out what's going to be happening in this town. And that's going to go along with the town plan. I suggest we send it to the VCR C if it doesn't cost us any money and tell them to take out. From the current plan, everything that we don't need in there. Because yes, it, maybe it is too big and just concentrate on what we need. And let's go forward, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.